Good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting, Thursday, May 13, 2021. It's 5:00. And we're going to begin our meeting by signing a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, adjustments to the agenda?
I do, I have one. Let's call it 5-2, and if you just pen in June School Committee Discussion, that's all that is.
School what?
School Committee Discussion. We will not require a vote, but I want to make sure it gets on the agenda for 5-2, please. And there's no executive session this evening.
Okay. Any comments from the public tonight?
Well, did you hear that it was Main State Nurses Day or National Nurses Day just yesterday?
I did, yeah.
You did?
I did, yeah.
What do you know about that?
What I know is that our Carol is one of the well-recognized nurses in the state.
Yeah, Nurses of the Year! Governor Mills, yeah.
And I was interested in what I was trying to find on here so I could be a little more specific, but John did send out a notice yesterday to the staff about it, and the comments that came back from the staff were amazing. It was just so, they were so complimentary about what a great job you had done, Carol, how, you know, efficient you have been throughout this whole thing, and how you've been so professional and on top of your game all the way through, and I know the staff really considers you to be a rock star through this, and the board does too. And I know John does too, because we've talked a few times, and he said to me, "Oh, I have to call Carol at such and such a time of day," and he was, you know, she was trying to do this, and I hated to do it, but, you know, we've got to get this done, and she was right on top of it, and so we wanted you to know how very much that we appreciate you, and also...
Well, also, it's funny, because not only does Lori's, not only does Carol, the nurse, or any Carol, because of all these other people I want to thank.
Nurse of the Year.
Not only does the Nurse of the Year Saturday morning get ruined, when she's either doing Girl Scout cookies, or she's under the hairdryer, and I crawl, and I say, "We've got a COVID case," Amanda's weekend gets ruined too! Amanda's the other dog, and she's worked around the block for us as well. And these two are always involved with anything, and there's a million, not a million, it seems like a million times when I just look at Carol and I go, "Want to talk in my office?" And she nods, and we go in, and it's a close call, it's a near miss, there's nothing public, we know about the situation in Acton, it never leaves the two of us, because it's not an issue. And then there are issues when you guys see the letter, right? There's an associate of. But these two have done a great job, literally, under a hairdryer on one Saturday morning, and also doing Girl Scout cookies, at her plant looking to go to the Rangeli auction, and I'm holding her up and buying moose antlers, and I'm like, "No, we've got to close school, girl." So these two have knocked it out of the park. We actually also had one time where we had to really close contact like a whole bus, and we had Lori and Kristy Hall help us, which was super helpful. In the big cases, we bring in some confidential people, and it's almost like the Pentagon. You're trying to figure everything out and make the call to home before a certain time, and it's just been crazy. And we are in the last month of school, and I'm hoping we don't have to do this again. So I just wanted to recognize these two stellar employees of ours, because they've gone well above and beyond all year long, and this is probably our last School Committee meeting of the year, so I just want to... Kim, I think you have something over there on behalf of the School Committee and the administrators, and if somebody, maybe Lori, if you had your camera, we'll get some photos for the webpage, and...
Thank you.
Okay. That would be awesome, and maybe after we, Kim gives these to them, we'll get a few photos, and we'll let you two run.
Thank you.
You bet! You guys are awesome. I know Amanda's got to go to a softball game because she's a coach.
Come on, ladies, stand up.
And Carol mentioned something about happy hour over at Willie's.
And this doesn't have flowers, and it doesn't have a gift certificate in it, but it has so much appreciation in it for our superintendent, for all he's done through this year with COVID. He's been amazing, the way he's kept, kept the school open, and done all the, you know, those, what do they call them, the red telephones that you have, like the president has a red... And we just wanted you to know that as a board, we truly, I know your staff does too, but as a board, we wanted to just recognize you with this little card to tell you how much we appreciate your leadership.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, ladies, you are on your way. Thanks again for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
See you later. Bye-bye.
School telephone.
Jeanette. Okay. Let's go right, let's go right to number three, which is Celebration of Learning, Summer School.
If I could hold on that, I'd love to introduce our two new teachers, because you're going to vote on them later.
You can do that.
Well, that's because, yes, that's because I didn't know if they were coming when this stuff happened.
Okay, that's great.
Oh, yes, it did surprise you. Is that way you can send them along very much?
That's great, then you don't have to hang out either.
Sounds good, okay. So, we actually have three new hires tonight, two of whom can be here. I'll speak of the last one, because she's in Arkansas right now, and you'll get a chance to meet her in September, at September meeting. But I have with me Megan Goodwin, who's going to be teaching third grade, and Kelsey Lizotte Johnson, who's going to be teaching kindergarten. They're both here, and I thought, Megan and Kelsey, if you could, Megan, we'll start with you. Maybe just a soundbite of who you are, where you're from, what you're looking forward to, okay?
Yeah.
And then we'll do the same there, and there might be a few questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you, welcome.
My name is Megan Goodwin. I went to the University of Maine at Farmington, and I just got my degree on the 8th, so I am being voted for for that position. I'm really excited to meet all the staff, and I think that Acton is an awesome place to be. Everyone's so caring, and even I can see that the school board is caring, so I'm very excited to be here. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hold on, where are you originally from?
I live in Lyman.
Oh, close. And where'd you do your student teaching?
I student taught three times through Farmington, so one was at Spruce Milton Primary in Livermore Falls, that was first grade. The second one was in New Sharon at Cape Cod Hill, that was fifth grade. And then I just finished up my student teaching at Bedford Middle School for sixth grade.
Nice, nice. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. Kelsey?
I'm Kelsey Lizotte Johnson. I was born and raised in Sanford, so I've heard a lot about Acton through the years. I went to school with a lot of people who came through this school building. I also went to the University of Maine at Farmington. I graduated in December with a degree in Early Childhood Education, and I am dual-certified in both the five and K-3 education. I did my student teaching at Willard School in Sanford in second grade.
Great, awesome.
Any further questions? Then later on, about 40 minutes from now, the School Board will be voting, so if you two can behave yourself after you leave for 40 minutes, this crowd will probably hire you. So try to stay out of the news for 40 minutes, okay? You're doing great right now. So you can feel free to leave anytime you want, otherwise you can sit through some policy and some other really interesting things for now. That's completely up to you, but I would recommend you leave when you get up. All right. I will give it back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And we will move on to Celebration of Learning with Summer School.
Yep, I have a flyer or just an informational page for you about where we are with planning our summer program at Acton Elementary. I have a sample schedule there, so you can see what the day will look like, or the week. It's Monday through Thursday, we start July 12th, we're going to go through August 5th, so it will be four weeks. We'll have students that are entering first grade through sixth grade, so we'll break them up into the K-2 cohort in one side, and then the 3-5 cohort, so all the kids that are entering first grade through sixth grade will either be at the primary end or the 3-5 end of the building. We decided to do a more integrated approach and try and make it a little more fun for the kids. So we'll start the day with a whole group read aloud, and Jen Goodwin has been nice enough to work with us on our themes and pull some books for us to use, so the specialist groups are involved in helping us plan for this as well. We'll do a whole group read aloud, maybe a Go Noodle or a game that we would do as part of morning meeting, and that would be with all the kids, everybody together, including any of the kids that are here for ESY program. It will be all-inclusive. So we'll start the day that way, then we'll take an hour and do ELA-related activities, whether it's phonics at the lower end, reading, writing, and word work at the middle end of the building, and then we'll take time for snack and recess, and then we'll finish with sort of a math block where we'll practice number fluency and fact fluency, obviously. We want to make sure kids don't lose that over the summer, so we'll integrate that, but we also want to do a lot of the STEAM-related activities and try and use the theme for the week with some hands-on, engaging activities for kids. So you'll see the four themes that we're going to work with, an example that I met with the teachers of the program last night during ERD, or yesterday afternoon. These were some of the ideas that we just are around the Ocean Week first, lots more to be developed, but this is where we are with that. There are 28 kids in those grade levels that have been invited. We have five staff members that are on board to help us with that. And then we have the middle school, who's doing Standards Recovery Model. It's the model they've done in the past, where they're going to have kids entering seventh, eighth, and a couple of eighth graders that are entering ninth grade are going to do some Standards Recovery here with us. That's going to be Monday through Wednesday, same timeframe. And then they actually will be, once they've completed their required standards, they can, they no longer have to come. So they run a little bit of a different model than the younger kids. They've had, they've invited 12 students to participate in that, and we have two staff members that will be running that part of the program. So this is where we are. We'll spend a couple of more weeks, ERD time, just gathering materials and planning activities. I told the teachers I would really like it if they didn't have to return after they leave on the 10th until the morning of the 12th, and we'll be ready to go, because I want to give them their time too. So we're trying to get that done before everybody leaves. And we have, I have given parents until the 19th, next Wednesday, to return their forms so we can plan on how many kids will be attending, and whether or not, or who needs transportation, so we still need to work, work that out for them. So, take any questions you have at this time.
Will the snacks be coming from Sanford like they did last year? Or are we going to do our own snacks?
We'll probably do our own snacks, hoping to work that into the budget, because as you can see, that our snacks are going to be theme-related, because we're going to have like goldfish and things during our Ocean Week, and we talked about animal crackers during our Animal Week, so we're trying to make things just a little more fun.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I was hoping we'd do lobster during Ocean Week.
Okay, Mr. Gondola asked for lobster tails, and I said absolutely not.
Field trip to tents.
Yeah, right?
If it opens up ever again.
Today.
Oh, is it?
Oh, good. Lori's done a heck of a job leading this move into a summer school. Now, we've always had summer school, and it's always been six through eight, and then last year we added some lower grades, which was great. We were like the only school in Maine that I know of that had a summer school, we're like the first school to reopen. Remember, summer school last year was boot camp for this year, it seemed so long ago. And now this year, it's really, this year's kindergartners, next year's first graders, all the way to freshmen going off to Sanford High School are involved this summer. We have a lot of kids here. Lori's done a great job at organizing this and getting the themes together, and she's going to be working this summer as the point of contact and the manager of our summer program. And moving forward into next year, the federal funding requires a set aside for learning, we call it learning loss is probably a better name for it, but that's what they're calling it, of 20%. So those federal funds will help support our summer school, Lori, and any other supplies and things that we need. So that's, it's very fortunate that we have that, because that wasn't in the budget for such a robust summer school. But 20% over two years needs to be set aside, so I'll be accessing those funds to take care of that for the kids and the staff. And it's going great. We've never been more prepared than we are now, thanks to Lori.
That's what I was thinking as I looked at this. This is like, wow, we're ready for summer school, you know? We've got a plan in place, and I appreciate the idea too, that the teachers won't have to come in ahead of time between the end of school and summer school, so they'll get a break in there. That's, that's important, and I appreciate the way you organize that. Anybody got any comments about the summer school? It looks great, doesn't it?
I know, it looks like it.
I love the use of themes.
How many kids were in summer school last year?
Oh, gosh.
Twenty-five?
We had 25.
I think we had 25, which was pretty bit, considering it was a COVID summer school too, it was pretty interesting that we had 25.
And before that, like other, like normal years?
A dozen, a dozen, you know, it depends. We always have ESY.
We always have a special.
We always have the special, but the Standards Recovery may be up to a dozen a year before.
Yeah.
So the special will be in addition to this?
Sharon can speak to that, absolutely.
So those numbers that Lori have, that 28 and the 12 does not include the ESY students?
Right, okay.
But one of the things that we're talking about doing is something that we've, that I've done in the past in the larger districts, is integrating the, well, including is a better word, the students with disabilities with the students, the typically developing kids, because they can be together most of the time, or a lot of the time, and then they can come out to get their specially-designed instruction for the ELA, if that's their problem, or mathematics, if that's their issue, or both, if both are their issues. So we want to plan so that, you know, during these times where you see the schedule, you know, our kids with disabilities will be included, and I will add staff to make sure that they're appropriately covered and adequately covered, and then they'll come out when they need to have their specially-designed instruction. So that's really exciting to me, because we have, the three years that I've been here, this is going to be my fourth summer, I think. We haven't been able to do that, because we haven't had any typical peers in the building. They've all been kids with disabilities, and unfortunately, they had to be just with kids with disabilities, and now I'm so excited that they're going to have the opportunity to be with their peers that they're with all year long, their friends that are all here all year long.
That's great.
And we're also hoping to combine the transportation.
Yes, that will all be combined.
It will use, we'll use the bus or the vans, or whatever's most appropriate, whatever the combination is that Kim comes up with, with Sharon, to make sure the kids get here, it'll all be one transportation system.
And we're only looking at about 11 kids with disabilities, I think, that will be coming. You know, probably that would be the max, because I've been getting, they've been trickling in all of the responses, you know, the yeses and the noes. I made a bunch of phone calls today, and hopefully I'll get some more answers, so...
That's good.
Anything else about summer school? Thank you, Lori. This is, this looks fantastic.
Yeah, it looks like, like the menu.
I'm glad our kids are going to have these opportunities this summer, for catching up and for doing the extra help they might need. All right, and let's move on now to number four, which is our consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mary and Jeanette, any discussion? All in favor? I don't know. All right, so let's move on now to Chair Reports. Superintendent, do you know...
Just a couple brief things? Sure. It's been communicated to the public, and everybody knows that we have a month ago, it'll be June, right, Amanda? June 8th, and June 10th are our two last days for hybrid students, and June 8th will be our last day for fully remote students. They leave at 12:30 those days, and we're going to have them return laptops on their last physical day of school here with us. We're looking forward to that. We have a very, very busy week that week, with graduation, rain dates, and the high school graduation, and the high school walk-through we're doing again this year, which is very exciting. We'll have the class of 2021 join us on Wednesday, probably mid-afternoon. We'll have them walk through the building, and then that's going to be on Wednesday the 9th, so students who ended school on the 8th will have an opportunity, if they have a brother, sister, or cousin, they want to be here, to just be outside, because they come out this end by the bus circle, and they go up to the sign, and they have a big picture out there, and Tracy gives them the letters they wrote to themselves, which is a lot of fun. So everybody can come, it's just that on the inside of the building will be the white-scheduled students that day, so everybody's included if they want to come. So we're really looking forward to that. I don't know, in the crazy world that we're living in with the pandemic and planning, I don't know that I've ever been so prepared this time of year for next year. We're moving with our hiring, we've got a schedule complete, like the literacy blocks, we know when they will be in each cohort. We're in great shape. We can turn the key, you know, on the last day of school, and the teachers don't need to come back in for anything. And Andy's got a big job in front of him for the four weeks from the time that we end school to the time summer school opens, to make all the moves, and do all the cleaning, and get everything ready to go for summer school. So he's, he's got a great plan in place. So I'm amazingly feeling like, unless I find something huge, we're in great shape right now. Really, really feeling good about that. And lastly, I've got a piece of good news for us. Kim Oliver, who gave us her retirement plans, things have changed in Kim's world with traveling and COVID, and she's going to be giving us another year, and I can't... Kim is not going to retire, and she's going to be playing point guard for the Bulls like Michael Jordan, not coming out of retirement. She's not going anywhere.
Aim this camera, aim that camera right at her. That end of the table never gets on TV.
Poor Kim.
And, yeah, I'll let this out tomorrow.
I remember when John told me that Kim was going to retire, he said, "I'm not going to beg her this year." He says, "I'm just not going to beg her this year." I said, "Okay." But I came in signing checks and stuff, and I said, "You know, you would be happy to rescind our acceptance of your resignation, you know? You would be more than happy, you know, if you..." She's like, "No, no." You need to think about it, you need to think about it, because it would make us very happy if you would decide to stay." So that's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for giving us another year.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is it for the superintendent's report.
Did we have to vote to rescind something you just said?
No, I accepted it, and I rescinded it. Yeah, we, yeah, we're good.
All right.
We're good. I got a verbal commitment out of her for a year, which, I know we've got some collective bargaining next year, we've got a big year, we're reopening with everybody in the building. It's, yeah, it's good to have Kim right there, that's the anchor for us, as she always is.
Hey, what's going on in the greenhouse here, outside?
Well, that would be huge.
How's the radishes? How are the radishes? Are they coming up?
Oh, my goodness, there's all kinds of plants growing out there. Oh, yeah, yeah. Mr. Ross had the kindergarten class out at recess today, sort of, and next thing I know, they're all in the greenhouse with me, watering their own plants and filling the water buckets, and I just stood back with my hands, and they took over. So they've got their plants growing, and they're very proud of them, so...
Any other questions for any of the administrative reports?
Well, I would just like to say, I want to thank the PTG for the efforts of the Teacher Appreciation Meet. That was amazing, that list I saw. I thought that was so cute. I love that book. But I want to thank the teachers. They've been through a lot this past year and stuck with it. Didn't leave us. Appreciate it.
I think it's, I think it's indicative of what, how this Acton Elementary School staff as a whole has become a community. You know, they say it takes a village, well, it's really become a village, and they've all worked together, John from the John's leadership, and with Carol, and with Kim, with all the money coming and going in different directions, and Lori, and all the, all the administrative staff, and I think it just shows that they're not only committed to the school, but they're committed to all the kids of Acton, and they're all, they've all worked together for the benefit of the Acton kids, and I think that that's something that we as a community can be very proud of, because it's not so everywhere. But we're here, we don't need everywhere. We're good. Yeah, thank you so much. Anybody else? All right then, let's move on to...
5-2.
5-2.
With 5-2, all I wanted to mention to the board is, I don't see, and I mentioned to Judy when we did our meeting over the agenda to meet in June, because the week we would meet, we can't meet anyway, because every night there's something going on, and we're doing some of the hiring tonight, so my suggestion is, we give June a break, let the building take a breath, and get some things going for the new moves, and come back on a morning in July when summer school starts. We'll do a workshop, an agenda, we'll hire the few remaining positions that are out there. I'm very hopeful that I'll be interviewing in the next two weeks for those positions, and we'll have nominees for you. As long as I have them under contract and aren't going anywhere, you can vote them in in July. That's been my recommendation, and we'll have plenty to do with that July morning. We can do like a 9:00 AM to noon type workshop and School Committee meeting, that. Judy and I talked about it, I wanted to pitch it to you, we can come up with a date another time.
Well, I've been wanting to do workshops, so, and maybe I'll give you some suggestions.
Okay. So July it is, and we'll come up with a date?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Excellent, so that was just informational, doesn't require voting.
So we don't need to, we don't need to vote on the fact that we're not going to have a June meeting?
No, we just, we just won't post it.
We just won't post it.
We don't post a meeting, we don't have a meeting.
All right. What's for all of us?
We never have any public anyway. I don't think, well, I know, I didn't, you know, they won't be driving up, I don't think.
Okay, then, let's move on to number six, and Committee Reports. Do we have anything at all in the long range? Nothing tonight, okay? So let's move on then to the Policy Committee, 6-2, and we've got quite a list of policies here to, we haven't got one over here yet, but a list of policies to look at. The first one, GDDR Support Staff Employment Release. The recommendation is to delete that, and that's why.
Okay, so the reason, the reason why we're recommending a deletion is because when we, we have brand-new application forms that teachers, support staff, and administrators they sign, and Drummond and Woodson had redone them in 2019, and in the back, there's basically all the questions, you know, for background checks, to allow for background checks, so all of the stuff that's actually, you know, this is just saying you released to do a background check, that's also on the form as well. So what we use for our application, which we have to make sure everybody fills out when they apply for a job here, more than replaces this. We don't need this.
So it's just redundant, really?
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to delete policy number, or GDDR Support Staff Employment Release.
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, second by CJ. Can we discuss that? All in favor? Okay. Now, these are the remainder of these, are these new policies, or are these all, I guess...
Two through six are just reviews? Yeah.
They're just reviews. 1998, 204, and just maybe do...
Okay, so the new one is just the last one?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm going to take that back. C E O dash R, the Performance Appraisal for that support form, we are replacing it with what we currently use. So what's in the book was the old appraisal form, but we haven't used that in years, and what I put in your packet is the form that we actually use.
So it's an upgrade?
It's an upgrade, yeah, but it's a procedure too, it's just, so we're just upgrading that.
And that's way back from 204, and before that, 1998.
So then, let's take, let's take GDI, Support Staff Assignments and Transfers, GDO, Evaluations of Support Staff, G D O R, Performance Appraisal of Support Staff, GFC, Evaluations of Administrators, and GF CR, Evaluation Procedures for Administrators. And let's have a motion to accept those policies, I assume we've all had a chance to vote, accept those policies. vote, accept those policies as updates.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, removed by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any further discussion about those policies? Okay, all in favor? And then, on the back of here, there's a new policy, which is called E B B C A, Fragrance-Free Policy.
And I'm going to divert that question to Mr. Brazier, because he brought it to me.
Now, one of the things that schools are kind of enforcing, and a lot of this came to light with the air quality issues that we dealt with when we did the reopening in September, I came across some information from the American Lung Society, and it basically outlines the dangers of people bringing in, like, fragrances, like air fresheners, and like plug-in oils and stuff like that, the essential oils and stuff. Some of it, I mean, some of it smells good, and some of it may have a calming effect, but actually, a lot of it is very toxic. And when I came across that information, along with some of the other stuff, I talked to John, and I said, "Boy, if we don't have a policy, we really should consider doing this." So basically, what you're seeing is information taken from that document from the American Lung Society, and it's, it's to protect the health of the staff and students more than anything, so that's why, that's why you're looking at it for review.
Go ahead, man.
I just feel it's written incorrectly, that's all. You know, like, you always have the procedure as a separate thing, you know, where it's dash R, or dash, you know, that's how our policies are. I don't know if it matters, I don't care, I'm just saying.
Does it have a procedure, policy committee, I remember going over this, this is a lot of work.
Well, the procedure's listed here, so usually the procedure's taken out, because it's just a policy, we want fragrance-free environment. Then you have a procedure, what we would do, I guess.
Right, okay, I hear what you're saying.
The word policies is weird to have in the middle of it.
How about having Fragrance-Free Environment Policy and Procedure, change the title of it?
Yeah.
Or you could do this, I could rewrite it and have two policies.
Different policies, and R?
Have the top part as the policy itself, and then do an E B B C A dash R, and from the procedure down.
Just to follow what we've been doing.
Yeah, and so now, so next time, you'll see two.
You want to look at it in July?
So, yeah, so we'll table that for tonight?
Good catch.
Well, yeah, it's the first one anyway, it's the first draft, so you'd have to do at least two anyway, so.
Okay, want to make anybody, do you want to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table E B B C A to separate it out.
Second? Seconded? All in favor? So moved. Okay, new business.
Sure, seven-one is to move Kristy Hall, our school social worker and guidance counselor, from a probationary contract to a professional contract, or what's known in school statute as a continuing contract. And Kristy is the last of the group that was on that three-year cycle, you know, how the state goes between two and three, and they go back and forth, and we're back to two, and she was on the three. And I've got to know Kristy really well, in my background of almost thirty years of public education, I've known a lot of social workers, I've worked with a lot of social workers when I was working primarily with at-risk students, I very much understood the role of the social worker and the need of the social worker, and I've got to tell you that Kristy Hall's one of the best social workers I've ever worked with. She knows her stuff, she's, works great with families, she's not a pushover, and she just has that intellect to understand that there's also always more to the story. And she's, she's great, and I just wanted to just mention that Kristy's, Kristy's good for A E S staff and students.
Oh, fortunate, ever.
Yes, we are.
So I'll look for a motion to move Kristy Hall to a professional contract for the coming year.
So moved.
Second? Seconded by CJ. Any further discussion?
Well, I just wanted to know her role in the COVID situation, like we had Nurse Wendell, we had Amanda at the front managing, and so she was like behind the scenes doing the family stuff?
Of all, a couple of roles. One is, as you probably have read everywhere, is that the mental health impact of a pandemic is overwhelming for some people, so she's had a lot of quiet conversations with kids and staff in her office. She's also done a lot of outreach through her guidance curriculum, you know, given this time, and finding yourself being alone more than you've ever been. So she's interwoven that into her guidance curriculum, which is really K through eight. But, you know, mostly, too, we've had to call on her as a confidential employee, as a social worker, to sit down at the table and figure out how we're going to close contact with Lori and I and Carol, a bus full of kids, and make the call home saying, and we've had to do that, and we can utilize her in that role, too. So, yeah, this year has been, it's been interesting and different, and she's been a real team player.
Now, I think the COVID has hurt the high schoolers a lot. I mean, I have many nieces and nephews, and it's just a horror scene last year and this year for them, because they're active kids, and then they couldn't be active. Did she reach out to any high schoolers, or did high schoolers, any parents of high schoolers use her? I mean, we would do that, right?
Not that I'm aware of, but to be honest with you, what she's been really good at that she would normally do is her duties as the guidance counselor, is that step-up day and having Beth Letourneau come in and work with registration for the eighth graders, and she still organized all of that, and has actually organized a step-up day down at Sanford with mass and in small groups the last week of school. Has high school teachers, have high school parents reached out to her? I don't know. I would guess probably not.
They have quite a bit of...
At Sanford.
At, at the high school, and I think that probably working with high school students would be a little easier for them than her trying to go between the two different age groups.
Yeah, but some might be only at home doing the at-home teaching, and so they're here and acting.
Yeah.
Right.
I was just wondering.
It's been interesting, because Lori and I are dealing, or have so far dealt with almost zero discipline in this building, but it's inward behaviors, it's the, it's the quiet stuff that Kristy's dealing with, and we're not. We're dealing with Johnny wants to run out the door. Well, Johnny's not running out the door, but Johnny might be sad, and those are behaviors that we don't have to deal with in the moment, but that Kristy is ongoing and supporting, and she's been busier than ever with that kind of behavior.
And it's working, because I get the things parrot at home to me. Mommy, you really need to calm your body.
Way to go, Chris.
Don't fuck your lid, do you? We have the, one of the things that she gave out earlier in the year, still take up to our fridge, and she says, "Mom, you still need to read this."
What'd they pick up, huh?
That's good.
So it's also the P V I S must have influenced, you know, we did that, we just had a good time, and really had it going well before this pandemic.
We're picking that right back up and rolling with it, this, the Friday assemblies. We are now doing CAT cash again, thanks to Jen Goodwin and the P V I S committee to draw on a Friday, you know, like we used to do in assembly. My goal, I hope, the first Friday of the year, where else I doing an assembly? We're doing something, man, we're not doing this like we did this last year. And we're bringing P V I S, P V I S back full war, and we're also looking at a guidance piece that's more, it's called Ruler, it's really a social emotional support piece that dovetails well with P V I S, and that's Kristy's idea, and she'll do great with it, but I put a hold on that, just till we see what reopening looks like, get the teachers on board, I don't want to, you know, add one more thing, I want to make sure this, we open well, and then as we look at our needs, maybe halfway through the school year, it'd be appropriate to bring, get some people trained and bring this new program in that dovetails very well, so that kids have the language to use how to express their emotional state. That's really what it is in a nutshell. It's language skills for, for young people, pre-K through age eight, or four to fourteen, and we'll invest in that, when the time's right, we'll update you and have Kristy in here, and you guys can all take a look at that. So I do see that coming, not day one, but further into the school year. Yeah, we're, we're not doing it like we did last year, moving into the next year. We'll be dancing around with our masks on, and then eventually, I think, we'll probably be allowed to have our masks off until the school year's over, yeah.
Tomorrow.
Not in school, that was what I heard, I haven't read my emails yet, so I really can't comment.
Do the new teachers know what P V I S is? We're just saying these acronyms, and I know that bothers us, acronyms.
With the new hires, anyway, to like cheerleader it, it's all good.
We have excellent onboarding processes here, this is him.
Awesome. Okay.
So you got a vote on Kristy?
They did?
You need to.
We voted, I thought.
You did, you voted on Kristy.
You raise our hands, yeah.
We did, very good.
Okay, so let's go on to seven-two, which is new hires.
If I could, I'm remiss in not really speaking about Elizabeth Higgins, because she's not here, so that's why I just want to make sure we had Kristy's vote done. Elizabeth Higgins is going to be teaching sixth grade E L A and Social Studies, did a wonderful job in her interview. What's really nice about Elizabeth is she worked up in Sad 55, Saukapi Valley, for a number of years. So I was able to call Saukapi Valley and say, "Hey, what do you know about this candidate?" and glowing recommendations, and then did the same down to Arkansas, where she is living right now, and of course, she interviewed over Zoom, and they hate to lose her, but she's coming back here, and she wants to live closer to family, although her family, and I think Andy met, mom and dad, right?
Yep, super nice people.
Andy came down and gave her a tour, this is classic, because she's like, "If my parents want to come down, they're looking for a place for me, and they want to see the school," so Andy came down on the Saturday and gave her parents a tour of the place. We're doing well, that's acting for you, that's Andy for you.
I want to show our building.
Yeah, it was great, and, and we're really glad to have Elizabeth on, so she has a number of years' experience. I think we're bringing her in at, yeah, at like step seven or eight, step seven, and we really look forward to seeing her. I will have her available in September to meet with you in person. So that's a little bit on Elizabeth.
Okay, so...
Well, what I always ask is, and the amount.
I have it. You want, one for each, each of the three?
Yeah.
So with Elizabeth Higgins, grade six teacher, she's a B A, step seven, at a salary of forty-eight thousand, six oh five. And Megan Goodwin is grade three, B A, step one, forty thousand, eight oh five. And Kelsey Lizotte Johnson, B A, step one, teaching kindergarten, forty thousand, eight oh five.
All right, let's start with Elizabeth, okay? Look for a motion to accept Elizabeth Higgins as a sixth grade teacher for the coming year for E L A and Social Studies, step seven, at forty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, let's move on. Megan Goodwin, I'll look for a motion to accept Megan as, Megan Goodwin as a third-grade teacher for the coming school year, step one, at a beginning salary of forty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And Kelsey Lizotte Johnson, I'll look for a motion to accept her as a kindergarten teacher for the coming school year on step one, at a salary of forty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars.
So moved, and thank you for coming. It's very nice to see the faces, even though it's kind of covered.
Second? Second, okay, all in favor? I guess you could, I guess you could get her in then.
Congratulations. Founded new homes, we're going to really love. Great. Thank you, school committee.
Number eight, is there any old business?
Can I have a question? And I know I'm like a little sort out of it, but, because you guys, I just realized, you guys voted not to meet in June. Do you still want to do policy in June?
Okay, that's only one, what, two hours out of what?
It's up to the policy committee, we, yeah, it's, it's up to you guys, we can meet or not.
You just, whatever policies you do, you wouldn't actually present until July?
Right. That's okay with me, because then if we don't do it, we're going to be another one behind.
Right, right, well, this one, I'd be able to finish all of G if we did.
Right, that's right. I'm okay with that.
So in July, you will present the policies from June and July?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And the one that we're going to rework to split as a procedure and a policy, the fragrance-free environment, that's going to be one that we also put in, each year get signed off, that I've read, and just like the acceptable use policy, because we want people to be current with certain items, and that's one of the items, once it's passed, we'll annually have staff sign off on.
Now, is that going to be in the parent's handbook?
It will be, it'll be in the student handbooks, because that applies to everybody in the building. Yes, good, good call, it will be, yes. And they, and parents also sign off that they understand policies, like the cell phone policy, so they know, they're saying, "I have read the cell phone policy," so that if we run into an issue, I can say, "Well, you signed off that you're informed." So there's a bunch of policies in the student handbook that are electronically signed off that Mike sends out.